Is HCAM ready? They are.
HCAM is ready.
Good evening, welcome to the Kingham Zoning Board of Appeals. It is December 19th, 2017 at 7:36 in the evening. These proceedings are being recorded by HCAM and also by the zoning administrator. Welcome. The first item on our agenda is Nicholas Bond Bear Cove Properties for a special permit A1 and Section 3C 8 of the zoning bylaw and such other relief as necessary to modify the existing floating docks at 3 Otis Street in the floodplain protection overlay district from bottom anchored to pile supported. This is a continuation from a prior hearing on November 14th and the applicant has requested to continue this hearing to January 16th, 2018. Is anyone here to give comments on this project for Bear Cove Properties? Where are we on the decision deadline?
With the request to continue the hearing, they submitted an extension of the decision deadline for a month, so it will be February 16th.
Okay. So with that, I would accept a motion to grant the applicant's request to continue this hearing to January 16th, 2018 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
There are second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're continued. Second item on our agenda is Claudia B. Olson to modify a use variance decision dated November 15th, 2007, which granted relief from Section 3A 1.87 of the zoning bylaw and allowed an accessory studio apartment by removing conditions related to continued ownership of the property at 249 North Street in Residence District A. And this is a continuation from October 17th, 2017. There also a request to continue this?
There is, to March 13th.
March 13th and?
The decision deadline?
I'm sorry.
February 20?
Hearing continued February 13th, decision deadline March 13th.
Okay. Is anyone here for this hearing? 249 North Street. If not, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing to February 13th, 2017 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We've just handled the first two items on our agenda. Next item on the agenda, and I'm going to need help with the pronunciation here, John P. Vermillion?
Vermulin.
Vermulin. For a special permit A1 under Section 3C 4A of the zoning bylaw and such other relief as necessary to install a 150-foot pile-supported dock float at 15 Howard Road in Residence District A and the floodplain protection overlay district.
I'm Brad Gaskell with SciTech Environmental Inc., representing Dr. Vermulin. I'm trying to get without cutting people off if I can help it. I've got a few visuals that may be helpful in the audience. I've got a couple actually here, too. These are basically the diagram that I've shown you, but I find it easier to look at handouts, really that plan that you have.
Yep.
It's just easier to work it from there. I'll be talking from the same thing.
I'll share with you.
Oh, did you get?
I'll give Emily the stand.
Oh, well, do you have an extra one for Emily?
Oh.
Although actually, we'll take it here.
Yeah, back to Mike.
Yeah. Go. Back to me. Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Vermulin is not here for the meeting, and his wife Susan. I have been doing this for about 40 years, and I represent or was with SciTech Environmental Inc. and so on the associate. I'm supposed to be retired. I kind of pick and choose my projects, and I pick this project because he's my doctor. That's somebody I want to keep on my side. I show you this map, the Sabo of the USGS, I've used for years with the docks. We, by way of reference, I think a couple of you guys know this, we probably designed three-quarters of the docks in the harbor, so the first milli- of the harbor over the last 20 years. This is?
Excuse me, Brad, just before you proceed, if there are any butters here for this and you want to move your seat so that you can better see what's being presented, you're welcome to do so at this time.
Can you also move the microphone?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But rather than do the speech?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Pardon?
Yeah, right, it's not gonna?
We'll send it over there.
Yeah, it's not gonna? It's not picked up on the HCAM. It'll go.
All right, well, I forgot. Not used to being on television. That's all right. Does that work?
There you go.
Is there a mic now?
Do you have any?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thanks.
No problem. Okay, in terms of the setting, which is important for this property, this is on Crow Point, that part of the Kingham's extensive coastline. And what's important about that, we've designed a bunch of the docks in the inner harbor, and the dynamics of the outer harbor are different, so this dock has to be designed accordingly for the 100-year floodplain where there's a three-to-five mile fetch during coastal storms, so that becomes an issue. We've been before the Conservation Commission, they gave us one evening, they gave us unanimous approval, and appreciated our environmental assessment, although the environmental review is not part of your focus. What's important about this and the setting is that it's a coastal, it's a drummel, and the result of which is the coastline is all glacial till, which makes it very rocky, and consequently, we don't have shellfish, which is, as Joe Fisher knows, is an issue under the Wilderness Protection Act, so that really wasn't an issue, and the coastline there is pretty, pretty non-destructive, let's say. It's pretty hard to have a physical impact to it. What's really an issue is designing this properly, so we'll stay under your event in that fetch. There's a 60-to-70-foot bank rises up above the coastal zone, gives breathtaking views to this piece of property, but it's also subject to erosion, other than the fact that it's highly vegetated, and the vegetation is very stabilized because there's a seawall that's built there that is important in terms of land use, in addition to preserving the bank, stabilizing the bank, because it's a very favorite neighborhood walking platform, so we have to make sure when we design this that we don't interfere with the movement back and forth on that. Just a couple of pictures of the site. And the neighborhood. This is the subject property here. Excuse me, this is the subject property right here. This is the pipe property next door. We designed this dock. You can, the purpose of this, other than showing the land use, is to show the docks in the area. And the town, several years ago, passed its own, the Conservation Commission, its own very specific performance standards for docks in the town. And they're only, can only be now 150 feet. Entire structure can only be 150 feet, so that's why we have that maximum length. Just gets us out to deep water, below mean low water. But one of the things about this picture is to show the surrounding land use. This is the property, the dock would be here. But the other thing is that this is, I think, is about 180, 190 feet. That's a 150-foot dock. So we're going to be a dock, we designed that one, as I said, and permitted that a few years ago. It's working very well, and this is going to be basically look like that. It's, as I say, 150 feet, it's piled supportive, it has a gangway and a float, and the float is going to be held by anchor piles, not, it's not going to be changed, it's going to be held by anchor piles. And one of the things about that is the stability, of course, you take it out in the winter, but we also are able to put float tops on the bottom and keep it off the bottom during low water, which is a requirement of the Army, the DEP, and the Conservation Commission, their regulations. Another view of the setting. That's looking with my back, I took these pictures, this is looking at my back to the wall, looking forward, and it shows the very sensitive strip of salt marsh that's there. This is, we're doing a salt marsh, excuse me, a shellfish study, the transect line. This is just turning around and looking up, this existing steps down and this existing platform, and that's what the wall looks like. And this is standing, I'm still in the same position, this is looking west toward the long dock that was built years ago over there, and this is looking east at the beginning of the piped dock next door, and you can value this is to see how massive that seawall is, and it's an important feature in that piece of property for land use purposes along Okay, so you have a smaller 11-by-17 picture, yes, and Joe has the formal plans, okay? What I'll do is very, very quickly, you might assume you want this to go through, the findings we're hoping for requesting on this, this, and I will paraphrase to keep it simple. Number one, it's supposed to be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the surrounding zoning, and it's a boat landing, it's allowed use, subject to your discretion and your conditions, if you issue us the special permit. So presumably, if it's in the zoning as an allowed use subject to conditions, it's considered consistent and in harmony as long as it's done properly, and as I said, it's consistent with the docks that we've designed in the past in this neighborhood. Number two, it has to comply with specific sections of the zoning. One section that refers to is to protect the health and safety and welfare. This dock, we've designed many of them, it meets and exceeds applicable engineering standards. And I mentioned that this has got quite a bit of fetch and velocity wave action. If you look at this, the stringers are steel, and it's overbuilt with respect to the cross-section members of it, so it's, as far as protecting public safety, let's say, this thing is not going to fall down. And by the way, all the docks that we've designed, some of which over 20 years, they've all gone through major storms, they're all standing, none of them have failed, and they've all met their environmental requirements, including not shading out salt marsh. So we've done this in the past, and this is actually the most substantially designed, we, the first time we use steel. And one, by the way, a digression on that, the reason we did that is to make it stronger given the fetch, but also, we were able, because of that, to spread out the piles so that we have less piles. Typically, piles are 10 feet apart without steel, now we could make them 20. So the Conservation Commission liked that, and we took 20 feet to get across the salt marsh, so that's what that's about. The, protect human life and property from flood flows, another sub requirement in item two, and as I said, we have steel stringers, and this is on piles, it's up to elevation 18 above mean low water, so that the storm, most of the storm flows are going to pass under, or if you get an extreme flow over it, so there really isn't an impediment because of the way things, it's designed. And also, the float and the gangway are going to be removed, a requirement of the Conservation Commission, it's going to be removed seasonally, and we get our biggest storms during the winter, so the, so the structure that's movable is going to be gone, it's not going to be on, it's not going to be on the property.
When it's removed, where is it stored?
What we've done is the Conservation Commission has a requirement, or a condition, Joe, that we, when we, we haven't got a contractor yet. When we get the contractor that's going to take care of this, he's going to present a plan with a schedule that's going to be on file with the Conservation Commission, it's not going to be on the property. The property is just not, doesn't suit itself for that. It's going to be removed from the waterside and taken off the property. Okay? As far as then, elements of 2D, protect water quality, prevent pollution, we're not going to use, the Conservation Commission won't let us, state doesn't allow any more, no more CCA, no more creosote, no more contaminating preservatives in anything that is going to go in the water, that is the water support structures. We'll use preservatives that are not, that do not contaminate the water column. We also, as a protocol, we, before construction, recommend that the wood be laid out in the open for about a year, just to weather before we put it in. So that's, that's like an overproportion. So that's how we're protecting water quality. And D is kind of redundant, 2D, it's about flood storage capacity, and we're preserving that with the pile structure, the flow-through, but also the piles, there's, I think, 12 of them, if I count them, and a pile is, you know, about three-quarters of a square foot, a 12-inch pile, so you're talking about, you know, 10 or 12 square feet in thousands and thousands of the open ocean, so there really isn't any measurable amount of consumption of storage capacity. Number three, findings coming back, that was 2A, B, C, D, specific standards, number three, specific for the site, it's appropriate. This site, I've been before you before with narrow sites, and there's a legitimate concern about spacing and setbacks and sideline compromising with neighbors. There's 280 feet of frontage on this property, so it is appropriate. The nearest setback on this side from the property line is 90 feet, and the rest of the setbacks are much, much further than that. So it's appropriate for the site, and there's no, as I said in the beginning, it's not going out any further than this dock, which is shown to the east, so there's no, and you can go under it with canoes and paddlecraft, so there's no further impediment to the near-shore water sheet in that area as a result of the way the thing is, the way it's designed. The five, kind of, it's a standard, it doesn't really relate to docks, but it says nuisance and hazardous pedestrian vehicles. I, hazardous to vehicles and pedestrians, it goes to that issue. Usually talk about lighting. Kind of, the board, I'm very familiar with the requirements. They've been, by the way, I'm sure you know, adopted, your requirements have been adopted in the Conservation Commission, for lighting.
So no lighting?
No, it's not no lighting, it's what we did is under 25 or underwater, incandescent, they're no closer than 12 feet apart and two feet high with down lighting, shaded down lighting, and that's the only light that we're allowed to have. We have to have some lighting to go out there. So that's, that's what we're proposing. And that, by the way, I haven't been before you for a dock for a few years, Joe, so maybe you've changed that? That's what has been?
I think they've always required no lighting, but?
The most recent ones have been no lighting.
Well, that's a, that's a newer thing, that's kind of dangerous. We've kind of proposed that we can, I don't know, is that a proscriptive standard now? Is that part of your?
It's kind of a standard condition. I would characterize that as, just over the years, it's just something that we've included in.
Well, I totally appreciate it. You don't want surface lighting on these structures, there's no question about.
Specific lighting that you're requesting for safety issues, you should, are they designated on the plans that we have?
Yes. Excuse me.
And if it's downlighting, so it shines down onto the deck?
It's in, it's in my application. It's not on the plans. It's quite specific to what I just said to you, in the application. I could follow this with putting it right on the plan, but that's easy, I can, I can have a plan this week, too.
Yeah, that's great.
Is that okay?
Yeah, and if I understand it, then it's just downlighting, and so, right, right.
25 watts. Okay.
So it's essentially along a railing?
Down, yes, yes. Well, the railings is going to be three and a half feet wide, it's going to be down, just so, you know.
So it just shines on the deck?
Yes.
And doesn't shine out?
No, no, not at all. That is the only, the only lighting. And adequate facilities in the contiguous upland, that's how I read this, this is item six, and we have water, it's a, you know, residential property, the home, water, electricity, two-car garage, so we can store, we can store stuff and support use. And this seven is kind of a little bit overlap with the two above that I just mentioned, but it meets standards of structure and stormwater, and we've got, as I said, we've got the history of designing these, I've explained the whole thing, the steel, the water flows through it, and the floats and the gangway are going to be removed, so that's kind of a quick review of those standards. I don't know if that's enough, I can answer more questions?
I don't really have any issues, any questions other than the lights, and, I mean, typically we've looked at that as kind of ornamental kind of lighting, and this is not, clearly not that, and it's very low wattage, strictly, as long as it's focused strictly on the deck for safety at nighttime.
This lighting would not be sufficient for going out there and sitting on the dock?
Right, I understand.
And party.
Yep.
I mean, it's to, just to get out there safely, and to get on a boat, and to get off a boat.
Ask a question about the dock, you said it would be removed every year, is that a requirement of this particular structure? It has no choice at all to be removed?
The Conservation Commission, we represented that. I don't believe it's a requirement of your condition, but there isn't any way we would recommend in that environment that it stay there in the winter.
It's only the float?
Yeah, the pot.
And the gangway?
The floats and the gangway, yeah, so the three-foot wide, three-foot long, very long gangway, a lot of money involved in those two things. I mean, you've got to take them, take them up, but it's a pile held, so the piles, the anchor piles, there's four of them, stay in place, they're driven down to receive.
Okay.
Or ten, whichever.
Do we have a copy of the order conditions from the?
I don't have a copy.
I can get that for you, too, for sure.
And I guess I should ask you if you have the other permits in hand, too, the chapter?
No, very good, very good. Here's what we've done, we have filed with, let's see, end of November, we filed with Chapter 91. That's a 268-day process?
Yes, right, right.
Which you know, okay?
I've been having these discussions.
I can't figure out why it's 268 and not 262 days, but that's what they say in the hand.
Yeah, but Dinky Little Bridge in North Adam, Merle, and I don't understand why it's taking so long, but anyway.
I don't know, and this is very straightforward. And then we filed with the Army three weeks ago, that's pretty straightforward. This is, and that's, you know, that should be, I don't know, a month, and I don't see any issues in any of this stuff.
It's not an individual permit?
No, no. Oh, no, 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 no. This is not?
Preconstruction notification, the old category two?
The, okay, cat two.
Yeah, okay.
Right, right, notification.
Five weeks.
What happened was, the, I know who I'm talking to, you know all about this stuff. What happened was that it doesn't meet the 600-foot standard for non-notification, it's 650 feet.
Right.
So I had to, I had to do the step two.
That'll be five weeks, so.
There you go.
Do you have the COMCOM order here?
I have a copy, which if somebody had a copy, I would be happy to do it.
I will get it back to you, I just wanted to take it.
Would you like to see it?
Yes.
I'm just taking it.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we vote to issue if the other permits are not in hand?
This is under a different section of the bylaw, that's an exception under Section 3C 8. This is explicitly authorized use, it doesn't require Board of Health or Conservation or planning input, or that state or federal permits be issued first.
So I think we can.
Yeah, yes, sorry, so yes.
Okay.
Was that not working? Is my phone just not working at all? All right, all right. This one will, Joe, hopefully. Here's the order, what's got amended, they changed, we made a mistake on that. I'll give this back to you.
Yeah.
There's trouble there, and everything, I'll leave it on. And then here's proof of recording.
Yep, and, and, okay. Right, so the, the order does have, requires you to submit a storage plan for the seasonal?
Yeah, that was my memory, I thought I, I remembered that right.
Yeah, yeah. These are the special conditions.
Yeah.
Is this working now? Rod, you project your voice so well that?
Yeah, I think you're fine.
We all, we all hear you. Are there any members of the public who have comments or questions on this application? Emily, do you have any special concerns? Do you want to take us through this?
Okay.
What's that? Want to walk through the conditions? Sure, okay. As Mr. Gaskell sort of summarized for us here, we need to make the following seven findings. The first is that the proposed use of the site is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, and I think we agree that this is an allowed use in this district, in this overlay district, and I think for that reason alone, it's in harmony with the general purposes and intent?
Yep.
Of the bylaw. B, the proposed use complies with the purposes and standards of the relevant specific sections of the bylaw, and I think we've seen that it does, it meets all the standards for the floodplain and watershed protection overlay district. This will not result in any increased incidence and flooding, it's in a coastal area, so compensatory flood storage, such minor impacts as there are, is not required, so I think it complies there. C, the specific site is an appropriate location for such use, structure or condition compatible with the characteristics of the surrounding area. As we've heard, there are several docks on adjacent properties, it's a very common use in the harbor, and similar in design and meets the standards of the Conservation Commission as well, so. The use is developed and operated will create positive impacts or potential adverse impacts will be mitigated. I don't see any adverse impacts here, I think the, any impacts on navigation are minimal, if any, due to the presence of the other docks in close proximity on either side here, so I don't think this will pose any adverse impact to canoeers or kayakers. I kayak through here quite frequently, and I haven't had a problem yet, so.
The only potential adverse effect I saw was the float and gangway being removed, if they were stored on site, you know, possible issues, but that's going to be stored off-site, so.
Stored off-site, correct.
Fine with that.
Okay. E, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, obviously not applicable to land side here, but I'm assuming that the dock is high enough so people can walk along the shoreline underneath the dock or cross the dock between at mean high water or below?
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Refine that a bit?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We set it at elevation 18 above mean low water.
Right.
If I can explain the difference between that and sea level, but I'll take 10 minutes to do that.
About five, it's about five feet, yeah, it's about five feet.
Yeah, it's about 5.16 feet. The, it's 18 feet above, okay, and the velocity zone is 22, adjusted to the, to mean low water is 27, so we've got the top of the dock at 18.
Right.
That's because of this recalculation of the 100-year event.
Sure, sure, yep.
So we've got to these docks now where I really can't go, I mean, that's starting to get absurd, I don't want to go higher than 18 feet.
That's pretty high.
So in middle to low water, the answer is yes, however, what the commission accepts, and what we've done here?
Right.
Is that we've kept the walkway on the top of the wall open.
Open, right, exactly, so people can cross. So people can cross.
Because it's salt marshing. We'd actually like to not have people look down.
Correct.
It's not an inviting beach.
Right.
But there's salt marshing.
No, it's not, right, right.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of a.
So people can pass. I mean, it's, it's no, it's no obstruction to them.
If you look at the plan, there's an opening and then go back and forth, there's no break-in.
Right. That's the only adverse impact that I can see and obviously that's not there, so. F, adequate and appropriate facility exists or will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. I mean, I think this has been engineered to the nth degree. I don't see any problems here. And finally, the proposed project meets accepted standards and criteria for the functional design of facilities, structures, stormwater management and site construction as applicable. It meets all the applicable standards, I think.
No.
So it's been engineered very well. And I think the steel stringers particularly, which reduces the, or the steel posts, rather, which reduce the number of posts is, is a, is a positive impact.
Steel stringers.
And steel stringers, right, steel stringers, right.
Okay.
And so.
I'm satisfied. So at this point, I would accept a motion to, to grant the special permit as requested subject to following conditions. First, that the project be completed in a manner consistent with the reference plans and representations made by the applicant, noting that the applicant will be submitting plans showing the lighting as already shown in their application.
Right.
Second, the float and anchors shall bear the identification of the owner or address of the property such that if they break loose or float away, the owner can be identified. Third, no ornamentation, flags, lights, windsocks shall be erected or placed on the pier, ramp or float other than the downward-directed lighting to illuminate the dock for wa, for walking purposes.
Excuse me, Joe?
Yep.
On that, is there a reason why the word dock is not in that when dock is in the application?
No ornamentation.
It should be erected on the dock as well. Should we add that in? Is there a reason?
Yeah, I think it's. Only because, I think it's because the, the downward-directed lighting, lighting is on the dock, but you're right, because I made that an exception, so we can include that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're right. So it's no ornamentation, flags, like, shall be erected or placed on the pier, ramp, float or dock other than the downward-directed lighting. And then fourth, the applicant shall file an as-built plan with the zoning administrator following project completion. And Michael, you asked about whether or not we want to add a condition requiring the removal to be kept off-site of the float and gangway when it's removed in the off-season. And I'm, I think that, you're going to do it anyway, so.
Right.
I think we can add that as a condition.
We knew that, right.
Okay?
Great.
So is there such a motion? So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We're approved.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskell.
As always, your complete, your presentations are very complete. We thank you.
I haven't done this for two years. I have a child who's wise enough to speak to Emily. And I designed her, she was very humble.
Do you have the?
Yes, she is.
Concom permit that I handed to you?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, here it is. Let me give this back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you, Joe.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is Seven Development Group LLC for a finding under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and/or a variance from Section four A of the zoning bylaw and such other relief as necessary to replace an existing detached, non-conforming garage/workshop with an attached twenty-two-foot by thirty-five-foot two-car garage/workshop with living space above located within the required fifteen-foot setback at fourteen Garrison Road in Residence District A.
Bruce is, she went to get Bruce.
I was about to ask who we have for the applicant. Okay, we've just done the introduction for Seven Development Group. Who do we have for the applicant?
Bruce Isador, Isador Wall, Ed Popiano, Seven Development.
You are on candid camera. Do you want to walk us through your applications, please?
So, we filed two applications, not because we think we need relief under both, but we're not sure how this board was going to view the situation. We have a situation where we have a house and a detached garage. The garage that's existing right now, very small, would actually not, you would not be able to get some SUVs even into the entrance of the garage parked in there. So that existing garage where it's located under the current zoning would violate the side yard and the rear yard setbacks, which are fifteen feet. I think we're around, you can look on the exact number of the plans, we're close to twelve feet on the side, fifteen is needed, and we're only a couple of feet off the, off the back, which also has a fifteen-foot setback. The, the plan would be to replace the existing garage and make it an attached garage to the house. So we would come out with plans that would, you know, build living space to the garage and then stay within the exact same footprint as the existing garage, which also has kind of a shed area in the back. The advertisement said we'd be using as a garage workshop. It's not a workshop we'd be using as a garage office, but we'd have living space above the garage. It would not exceed the height requirements that are under the current zoning bylaw for height. The setbacks would all remain the same because we would build in the same footprint as what's existing. So the, the question for me as the attorney looking at this is whether this needed a variance, which I think the board, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past has taken reconstruction issues as a variance. I looked at this and I think it's a forty-eight, Section six finding, which I can explain in more detail if you want, based on the fact that we, I wasn't sure how the board was going to view this. I filed for alternative forms of relief. So depending on which way we go would be the way I would describe the, the issue. Under a forty-eight, Section six finding, we're extending the nonconformity, but we're not, similar to the Hatfield Amendment, we're not increasing that nonconformity, we're staying within the same setback. I looked at the question of whether this could be done as a matter of right.
Right.
I think we have, and I don't know where the board is going with this, we have the amendments to forty-eight, Section seven that now take into account that if you're grandfathered, and I don't think we're even in a grandfather situation because I think everything that built there was compliance with zoning when built. But, but if we are in existence, I'm not, there was a side of me that said maybe we can just be as a matter of right because we're in existence when built and we're not increasing the linear nonconformity, we're just going up and we're not violating the zoning. I didn't want to get into that, so I decided that we would just go for the permit, but I think this is a forty-eight, I'll open this back up to the board. I think it's a forty-eight, Section six finding. I brought the cases that I think support that question, which the main case is Dietrich versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Chatham, and I have an extra copy of that case. But I, under a forty-eight, Section six finding, we just have to establish that we're not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. There are other structures in that neighborhood that have been expanded where the garage has had the addition built above. We're not violating the zoning with what's being built above in terms of, in terms of the setback issues, at least on one side, we're twelve feet versus fifteen feet, so we're not that far into the setback where we are. We have a situation where Ed's going to move into this house with his family. We need more space. We, he has kids and so forth that just going to need that garage and additional space. So I think it's consistent with other homes in the area. There are, there are other homes that have gotten variances and there are other homes that have the space above the garage. If we need to go into the variance question, I'll go into it. I'm kind of curious as to where the board feels we go with respect to the filing.
Emily, did you have a thought on that?
It's, it's been the board's practice, and I believe this is consistent with state law and other cases, that non-single-family or two-family residential structures don't have the, the same protections. So while under the local bylaw, you could reconstruct by right a, a single-family or two-family that was non-conforming in the way that you're proposing, those same protections don't extend to the accessory structures related there too. So in forty-eight, Section six, the word reconstruction is absent from the protections that generally apply to non-conforming structures. Even if it were there, you're not doing a simple reconstruction project. This is an upward extension and an intensification of the existing nonconformities. So it's, it's been the board's practice to, to review those in the lens of a variance.
Yeah. I'm trying to remember similar circumstances. I mean, there was a case on South Pleasant Street, the one-hundred block of South Pleasant Street at some point with the garage and the setback and the second-floor use, an office, I think. I think Baxter Street, rings a bell. I'm not sure how we handle those, if we did Section sixes or if we did variances.
So, the state law, which I think state law would apply, Section six finding, if, if we fit under state law, there's a case, the Wojcik versus Lovey case, which is a, one of the cases that's persuasive but not binding. But the court went into this issue about the fact that except clause under forty-eight, Section six says you can extend as a matter of right if you're not increasing the nonconformity, and that includes the word reconstruction. But then when it gets to the forty-eight, Section six permit, it doesn't use the word reconstruction, so the question is can you go in for, if you are reconstructing, can you come in? In this case answered that yes, that it's intended to mean, it's a July two thousand seventeen case, so it's fairly recent.
Does it really, what type of a structure does it really?
It was a residential structure.
Residential accessory structure or a single-family?
I don't know, but I don't think.
I mean, there is a difference?
I understand that the local bylaw may deal with it, but state laws, which, which is where you could go for the forty-eight, Section six finding, does not make a distinction between dwelling and, and garage. I mean, garages have been, I mean, that's an issue that can be looked at, but I think under these two cases, which I had sent along to Emily some time ago, that's why I filed under forty-eight, Section six, because I think what it's saying is that it's talking about a single or two-family structure. I don't think it's saying, well, that if you have a garage that goes with the single-family or two-family construction, it's got to be excluded. But in light of the fact that it's an open question here, we filed for the variance as well. I think, again, under the standard for a variance, which we've outlined in the filing, we have a septic system in the rear. That would be a significant financial hardship and not sure that we could move that septic system at all. So trying to, to do what we need, which was additional space and so forth, to try and do a literal enforcement, we would have to try to move that garage, we'd have to move the septic system. So I think owing to the soil conditions or topography, however you want to describe that, we can't get there and a literal enforcement would cause a significant financial hardship because it would just be, we don't even know if we could do it because we would both have to put a new septic in and be very limited in space because of the size of the lot. What's that? Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't be, and what Ed's saying is we wouldn't be able to fit a two-car garage over there either if we had to move it over. We'd lose one of the bays. So, open to further discussion. I think it's a project that's similar to other projects that have been done within town. I think he does really good work, so I think it would look really good.
Do you have questions on the specific project? Then I want to open it back to members of the.
I have a question on the, on the existing condition of the plot plan. That's presented, I, I'm having trouble reading. What is the blues, the blue rectangle? That is, which direction is that? To the west of the garage?
Well, I can answer.
That's the septic system?
Yeah.
So how far, if you were going to be adding a two-car garage, expanding the existing garage, how much closer to that?
Staying on the same footprint. We're going up.
No, for the bays. You said you couldn't fit one car in there and now you're going to add two.
If we had to, if we had to put the addition, pull it over, we'd be right on top of it. It's ten feet.
I'm, I'm, let me try one more time. The second, you said the current garage doesn't fit even one SUV.
So from a height, from a height standpoint, it's a two-car garage. It's actually, it's actually a two, it's actually a three-car garage.
Thank you.
It's a two-car garage.
That was not made clear to me. So it's an existing three-car garage?
Yeah. It's a tandem on one side.
Got it.
There's a potting shed in the back. It's not two, three bays.
I understand. I thought it was a one, single door currently and that you were expanding the size of it.
It's two doors.
Thank you. That wasn't clear.
Joe, you're in.
I'm okay for the moment, so.
Are there members of the public who have comments or questions on this? Yes, if you'd just come up to the mic.
Jeffrey Willison, ten Garrison Road, neighbors. Sorry that this is the first time we're meeting under these circumstances and thank you all for your service this evening. I sent a letter. I, I wasn't intending to be here, but I changed my plans because it is very important to us, given the size of the structure and the height of the structure that's going to be put in place next door, so I, I changed my plans. I don't know if you, did you get the, the letter that we dropped off? Okay, excellent. So I'll, I'll walk through that for the audience, but essentially we are next-door neighbors. I, I believe we're eleven feet or the, the proposed structure is eleven feet from our property line. Council made reference to forty-eight, Section six, which says that the existing structure shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. You'll see that a lot of the neighbors are here because we do believe that it would be substantially more detrimental to us. It is a, currently a one-story garage, no windows, you know, relatively unobtrusive, and the proposed structure with living space above, I believe there's five windows in the plan, would alter our yard scape. We would have significantly more shadowing in our yard. There would probably be more noise and light from the five windows and the proposed living space on the second floor. I believe, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I believe that there would be some trees that would be removed to facilitate the building of the second floor. So it's, it's a pretty substantial change and in our view, it would be detrimental to the property value that we have had for the last twelve years, living next door to our enjoyment of our backyard where we've, you know, had a, as I said, a fairly unobtrusive one-story garage, and now we would have a two-story garage with living space that, again, would create quite a bit of shadow. I understand that the proposed plans have a fairly significant extension of the main structure back into the yard, and I don't think there's much we can do about that, but that actually does also block a fair amount of our, our light that we enjoy in, in our backyard. So we, we do believe that there would be financial hardship to us as neighbors. We believe that there would be environmental hardship in our enjoyment of, of our property and that, that would be disappointing if this variance were allowed to go through. Again, we proposed, or we took some pictures of the current structure as views from our backyard. Certainly if there's not a decision made tonight, we would invite you to come visit the property and stand in our backyard and imagine what it would look like to have eleven feet off of our property and one or two feet off of our neighbor's property in the back, have a two-story facility, I mean, a, a living space that close to your property would be a very significant difference to what we currently enjoy. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Swindell, fifty-eight Burr Road. So we are the abutters. So their back lawn, abuts our back lawn. So Burr Road is a dead-end road. We're all the way at the end of their road and, again, I second Jeffrey that, you know, sorry to be meeting under these circumstances. They have a very friendly neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. Everybody, you know, respects one another and it's just a great neighborhood. It's. It's, a lot of the architecture is nice, some of the recent additions have been very tastefully done, including a garage two houses down. That was a single detached garage, one car that remained exactly how it was, just upgraded. So I've reviewed the plans, all, you know, it's quite extensive. I would say just the sheer magnitude of the structure is significant. You know, I, I have kids, I, I understand wanting a little extra space for kids. You know, the Johnsons that you bought the house from, raised a family of four kids there, it's a big house already that we look at in our backyard. We sit out on the patio at night regularly, we look at the stars, we have vegetable gardens, we recreate, and there's absolutely no doubt that this would be a significant intrusion, and the magnitude of the building just feels like it's, it's almost like this lot really can't accommodate a structure that large. With all due respect, you know, with the septic, this is my second house in the neighborhood, I've been there 22 years, 12 in my current house. The first house I lived in on Burr Street, I had a, a septic that needed to be upgraded on a very tiny lot, that I was forced to pay a significant amount of money to put it under my driveway, and I did so to be in compliance with the current laws at that time. And so my feeling is, if you're doing a reconstruction project like this, first of all, it's, it's a detached garage, quite a distance from the house, there's nobody ever in it. It, it's, it's a sizable garage. I, I didn't, I wasn't aware an SUV wouldn't fit in it. But that being said, there's never any lights on in it, there's no living space in it. It's very subdued. We, you know, one of the big things I noticed in the plans is, right now, you know, if I'm in my backyard and I'm looking at the lot, I actually brought a photo because I think it's helpful to see. I think it will share it, but, you know, that's standing from my patio, and, you know, the highest point that faces up us, which is literally like a foot and a half from our property line, is about 6'8", you know, 6'8", just a little taller than me. The roof slopes away almost flat, you can keep that. The roof slopes away almost flat and then slightly slopes up. We planted a Japanese maple to kind of block it, and there's a nice little pine tree that you can see in the picture that kind of blocks it, so when we are sitting out, at least we're not staring at the structure, it's noticeably there. But, you know, to take, I've noticed that they want to rotate the ridge line 90 degrees. So now you're talking about a foot off my property, our property, and a building that's like, I don't know how tall it is, I couldn't find a height in any of the 30 pages, but it's high, it's at least two stories or more. And all of a sudden, to have living space with lights and noise basically hanging over our backyard feels like a real detriment and, you know, would devalue the property, and also just kind of a detriment to the neighborhood. It just seems huge. So, you know, the existing nonconforming structure, we live with it, it's very subdued. I'd be fine if it stayed the way it was. You know, I don't like that it's, basically, when it was painted this summer, you know, the painters are literally standing in my yard, but it is what it is. It's there, it was built, you know, I don't, you know, in the 30s probably, but, you know. And so I would just think that if it's being reconstructed, that it would be done to the current zoning laws. And, you know, the fact that you're going from no living space to living space, you're rotating the ridge 90 degrees, you're raising that height two to three times higher, it's just a significant change that would be a detriment. And so in summary, it just feels very intrusive to our privacy, it's gonna change the skyline, it's gonna have light pollution, it's going to seriously impact us. So we are not in favor of the existing design. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Good evening.
Hi.
Board, my name is Gail Nathanson, I'm married to Adam Levin, who's also here. We live at 269 Main Street, which is on the corner of Main and Garrison Road. Our house on the Garrison Road is there, it's the Abbots', and then the Willisons', Jeff, and then the Fopianos'. I'm speaking to, and I know that there was discussion as we started the meeting, that this was sort of withdrawn, but I still want to broach the subject of a workshop. A number of years ago, a few, probably three years ago, our neighbors to the left of us on Main Street, which is 263 Main Street, had an existing garage that they were able to grandfather in a new garage. They went in front of the board, both the historic district and the planning board, I think, in the building, and got a variance to be able to put in a barn that was much larger and much taller than what they had originally. That barn is three feet from our property. There is a fence now between them, but it was very close to our property, so much so that when they put it in, they built a trench because they wanted to have a French drain, and my husband, who's very ill, fell in it, and they didn't cover it, and we had to go to the building inspector and ask them to speak to the neighbors to cover it. Their response was, "Sorry." So I, I'm upset a little bit because I see the neighbor here now. I'm concerned about a workshop. They said they got a variance to put in, have a workshop and to build their barn up high so they could have it as an art studio, which I've never seen anybody use it except for storage. Their barn, he uses an electric planer during the day, and I'm concerned that Mr. Fopiano, just be patient like you were with the other people, that your use of a workshop, since you're a builder, a commercial builder, would have a noise, an intrusion of noise, and that is a real concern for us, because we have to put up with that to one side, even though there's a noise bylaw in the town. I'm concerned, Mr. Fopiano, that you're gonna use your garage as a workshop using tools that are gonna be deafening, and I need to be assured that that's not gonna happen, because we, I was not able to go to the hearing for the other neighbor, and I'm here for this. This is a major concern for us and for the health of my family.
Was someone else in the back? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I am Diane Elliott, and I live at 56 Burr Road, and I don't know what was addressed in regard to grandfathering the, the lines and whatnot. I do know in this neighborhood, your house was my great aunt's house, and then my great, other great aunt lived in their house, and then next door to them was another, you know, person. So the structure was built in a whole different period of time, and that has changed. And so to, to think that you can keep the same space and grandfather it is not, it, it can't go on because it's a different period of time, and we all need our space. And the thought of this huge house going up in a neighborhood that you don't even know, but you don't know us, no, but to come in and create such a change is a very interesting thing to me. Lack of respect is what I feel. So change happens, and we all see that, but we need to respect one another and to know that grandfathers die. So that space that abuts the Swindells' lawn, it's not your space. You know, that's that respect that has to be seen and recognized.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Charles Abbott, 273 Main, which is the other corner of Main Street and Garrison Road, so fairly close to the, the site in question. I'm sorry I missed the beginning of the session, and perhaps there was more discussion about the workshop, my, which is my primary concern. I have concern for the whole neighborhood, we've been there for over 40 years, and we don't want any massive structures interfering with our neighbors as well. But the workshop is a concern. When the owner is a builder, and he's talking about a workshop in a, in a huge building that's more than a garage, a garage is for storage, garage means storage, and this building is for residential use, so living space, but also that workshop. I can confirm what Mrs. Nathanson said, the sound of a, a part-time carpenter using a planing machine in a close neighborhood was terrible, it was constant, and it took quite an effort to get some resolution to that. So I, I don't know the scope of the variance and whether that covers the particular use of the building, but there should be a definite restriction on this building for commercial carpentry use. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken, who, yes, ma'am?
I am Anne Marks, 11 Garrison Road. I will be very brief. We live, we've lived on Garrison Road for 30, or, excuse me, 29 years, almost 30, and we live diagonally across from the home that's being discussed. My major concern is that this existing, for one thing, the home itself as it is, has five bedrooms. It's a very large, beautiful home, I've been inside, and yes, it needs updating, but it is a very large home. The existing nonconforming garage, to have it extended and to have it raised and then connected to the home makes the home enormous and unfitting for our Garrison Road homes, and it bothers me considerably. Thank you.
Anyone else? I know. Any, anyone else who hasn't? Okay, yes, ma'am. If you can just go to the mic so they, because it's being recorded.
I, I guess I must have missed the beginning, but is there, in fact, going to be the use of part of the garage as a workshop? Okay, so that was removed.
It was never, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Well, it was written down that way.
It was never filed like that.
Excuse me? It showed up? Right. It was on the, on the notice.
It's, it's gonna be in office.
I mean, but that's, that's something that we can deal with.
That extension's there, yeah, it's gonna be in office.
I, I, that's the issue for me, because that is an issue, and-
It's only one story.
Yep, yep. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Bruce, did you have anything you wanted to add before we?
I, I think there were a couple, just a couple quick comments. There were some comments that this is going to be extended, I just didn't want that to be misinterpreted. It was going higher, but it's being in the same footprint, we're not extending anything on the ground.
And I did find on the plan, excuse me, Bruce, there was a gentleman who mentioned he couldn't find the height of the plans. It does look to be about 30 feet, give or take, is that what it looks like?
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you, it's about 30 feet high.
But that's for the two-story portion. How about the one-story addition in, in the rear of the garage?
Well, that's the-
That height?
That's gonna be half, less than that.
But, right, 15, 14?
We can make that whatever we-
I didn't see the dimension on it.
We can make that whatever we need.
Right, it's 6'8" now, and it's certainly gonna be higher than that because there will be a pitch.
It is, it'll be a pitch, it'll match the roof, all the roof lines.
So it'd be good that all of that height is proposed.
The height of the connection to the-
No, no, no.
The height of the little rear space behind the garage? The office? The ridge line, how high is the ridge line on the rear property line? I just want to clarify one thing for my edification, I believe it's evident, but maybe some of the people in the audience don't understand this as well. We're looking at strictly the garage. All of the changes to the existing main structure comply with all setbacks, so that's really a building permit issue.
As they require us.
Right, that's not before us, the changes to the main structure. It's the, I guess it's the connection to the garage as well as the extension of the garage upward on the existing footprint.
I would just add that in some applications, the board has viewed substantial additions to a house that prevents a conforming garage as a self-created hardship. So in some respects, the, you know, the changes to the property could kind of be viewed as a permit.
So for example, if we, right, so if the property is being expanded-
Correct.
And that expansion to the, the location where a garage could go-
Right.
That, in fact, is a self-created hardship.
I get that.
Yep.
Okay.
My recommendation at this point is first, I think it'd be worth us doing a site visit to the location. I have not been there.
I haven't had a chance to see it, see not only the site, but the surrounding neighborhood.
Right, and I appreciate-
I mean, I'm familiar with Garrison Road, but not intimately familiar with Garrison Road, so I think I needed to have, have a look at the other homes.
I think we'd like to, and second, Bruce, I don't know if you want to submit anything further on whether or not this qualifies for a finding- rather than a variance. I have not read the cases, and if you, you said you gave them to Emily?
I sent them by email, but I have copies here.
If you don't mind-
Do you want me to give them to you now, or do you want me to just do it in the-
Get the email back.
Yeah, we can just get email, they'd be better.
Okay, I sent it to Emily about a month ago. You might make sure she has it.
Emily, do you have the cases that Bruce has returned?
Um, I do, yeah.
Okay.
So if we could get them.
Yep.
I do, you know, they, they seem to relate to a single-family.
Right, right. But I think Bruce's point is that under state law, there's not a distinction that you're drawing between.
The distinction under state law is residential versus commercial.
No, it's single-family and two-family dwelling and all others.
That, that's the question that we need to look at.
I agree.
I think the comments that the neighbors gave us were exceptionally helpful to put this project in perspective, and that's something that we would look at when we go out on a site visit. We need to schedule a, I, I'm recommending that we do the site visit individually so we don't have to notice that as a hearing.
Right.
But then we need to come up with a date that works for a continuation. What's our, what's our schedule look like?
January 16th is an option, though.
Out of the country.
You're out of the country. So January- Potentially, I know we'll have you, Michael, I don't know about Joe Freeman's, that will-
That's because you-
I'm already, I'm already here for something else.
What day are we talking about?
January 30th?
January 30th works.
Is that the Station Street hearing?
Yes, yes.
I can do that, I can do it.
Okay, I can do that.
So that, that'll give us time to do the site visit, to look at the cases. That works for you, the 30th?
Yes, if you look at 50 Garrison, because that was approved here, so when you're looking at 14 Garrison, if you could take a look at that as well, it'd be helpful.
Okay. So do we need, the decision deadline is February 15th if we go the variance route, and March 19th if we do a finding. I think we're gonna need more time if we're continuing. I think we're gonna need more time if we're continuing to the thirtieth, we're not gonna turn this around in two weeks. So, can we get an extension, just a month's extension on the decision? So, instead of February fifteenth, it'd be March fifteenth for the variance, and then we keep the finding still at March nineteenth. Did you get that, Emily? For the dates?
Sorry, one more time.
So, we would do the decision deadline, if we go the variance route, that would be March fifteenth, and then we would keep the finding deadline at March nineteenth?
Can I suggest that they run together?
Well, we're not gonna push one, did we push them both to the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Do we need something signed by the applicant for the extension?
I'm just pulling on a picket line.
So, with that, I would accept a motion to continue this hearing to January thirtieth at seven PM.
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just as a procedural point, this chair wants to go out the door.
Yes.
Just wanted to make clear, please feel free to walk around the property, you know, anywhere in our backyard, so you can get a good viewpoint of what the structure may look like.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. So, if you see us wandering around...
Okay, all right, good. We'll recognize you.
Great. Terrific. Thank you. I'm gonna suggest we do a, we can take a five-minute recess before we resume for the next...
Right here. Hi, I'm leaving. Because you have deer.
Mario in Australia?
No, you're much tougher, she's much tougher looking than I am. Thank you for doing that.
No.
Joe, don't say that, it's a long... Hi, Michael, thanks for covering, I appreciate it, thank you so much, take care. Bye, ladies, happy holidays.
Susan, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Do we have a draft of the letter?
Yeah, we have one of you.
Oh, what is it?
Um, we've not distributed it except for the board. Yeah, okay.
I just did it from like the...
Is the, excuse me, is this like the chatter all on the TV, or is it mute? Is this recording, is this recording right now?
Yeah, it's not live on TV.
No, but the mics are picking up.
He's very good.
Sorry, Joe, I needed a break.
I totally get it.
The knee is doing well, though. Now I get this stupid call. Yeah, I know, I'm talking about my knee, so they can deal with that.
Okay. Oh, it's right here. Yeah, 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 yeah. Has this been distributed all of it?
No, two of them, only took the one.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah.
Which one, this one?
Yeah.
Hey, Em, is Mario coming, or?
No.
He's tight?
Nope.
Okay, so he's gonna have to mull in, then?
He's gonna have to mull in, and so we really need to record it. How are you feeling, you feeling any better?
Lousy tonight. You know, I'm trying to recover from this freaking day.
No, it wasn't right after Thanksgiving, the weekend after. Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, I was like, what? I think everybody, like, there's something going around. Drinking a short drink.
Next item on our agenda as we approach 9:00 PM is Riverstone LLC off Ward Street. This is a continuation from the prior hearing, which was June 6, 2016. Comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B and Sections 20 to 23, as amended, to construct a 36-unit condominium project, including nine affordable units on approximately 6.7 acres of land located in Residence District B. And for the benefit of the applicant, noting that this is being recorded by HKM as well as by the town zoning administrator, procedurally, I just want to note a couple of things. First, at the time this hearing first commenced, Joe Freeman, who's sitting to my left, was a regular member of the board. He is now continuing on in this hearing. He is an associate member of the board, and pursuant to our rules, I hereby designate him to sit on this hearing. Second, you'll notice that there are only two of us sitting here. The third member will have a chance to review the proceedings. Under state law, a two-member board is a quorum and is sufficient to hear a 40B hearing. We also have Special Real Estate Counsel Susan Murphy, who is here, and I'm going to ask Susan to bring us up to speed in terms of where we are procedurally and why we are having a 40B hearing, when many in the town say, "Wait a minute, we've satisfied our 40B requirements." So if you could bring us up to speed, Susan, then I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Okay. So first, I'll do the procedural history related to this application, then I'll answer the second question. So the original application date was March 29, 2016. The hearing opened April 27 of 2016. There were two hearings, May 11 and June 6 in 2016. I apologize. At that point, the zoning board had to make a decision as to whether or not to submit a letter to the applicant and Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, as to whether or not the town or the zoning board believed that a denial or conditioning of this permit would be consistent with local needs on the basis that the town had reached one of the safe harbors, as they're known, under the 40B regulations. Because it has been consistently the town's position since the permitting of Linden Ponds that the town is in excess of 10%, just by virtue of the Linden Ponds approval, the so-called 10% letter was filed with the applicant and DHCD on May 12 of 2016. The applicant then had the opportunity to respond, which they did. DHCD then responded on June 16, 2016, stating that they disagreed with the town and did not believe that the town had a safe harbor. During that period, which was 35 days, the hearing, which is required to be completed in 180 days, was told. So 35 days gets tacked on to the back end of when the hearing would have to be concluded. Subsequent to that, the board exercised its right on July 6 of 2016 to appeal DHCD's determination that the town did not have a safe harbor. That gets filed at the Housing Appeals Committee. It took the Housing Appeals Committee from July 6, 2016, until October 31 of 2017 this year to render what's known as an interlocutory decision. That decision stated that the Housing Appeals Committee agreed with DHCD that at the time of the application for this project, the town did not have a safe harbor. The interlocutory decision can be appealed, but not until after the board goes through the entire hearing process for the application and renders a decision one way or another. So it's there, but it's just on hold. The number of days stayed, meaning that no hearings could take place, was 482 days. So the total, 35 days plus 482 days, is a total of 517 days. That gets tacked on to the original hearing deadline, which makes now the statutory deadline to close the hearing, March 25, 2018. The board then has 40 days to render a decision after that, which is May 4, and then 14 days to actually file the decision, which would be May 18. But as far as holding hearings in which the board receives testimony, currently, the statutory deadline is March 25 of 2018. So that's where we are procedurally.
Okay.
The second question was why... So I answered the question on the 10% related to Linden Ponds, and we have this interlocutory order, and we can't... The board cannot do anything about that if it chose to until after it completes this hearing process. On the second question, which I believe relates to the fact that in the interim, the town has received an updated housing inventory... subsidized housing inventory from DHCD, which shows that the town is now in excess of 10% based on all the other projects that have been permitted in town. However, the way the regulations and the statute works is it has... You look at the date in which the application is filed. So since this application came in the door before the town had the... What we refer to in the town as the uncontested 10% from DHCD, then the board cannot handle this application the same way as if a new application came in tomorrow. The board would be able to assert that we have an uncontested 10% in the town and could deny solely on that purpose. Because this application came in ahead of time, the board still maintains the position that it filed with DHCD that the town was at 10% with respect to where it was at the time this was filed. But because that's contested with DHCD, and we currently have an order stating that the Housing Appeals Committee doesn't agree with the town, the town still... The board, I apologize, must still proceed with the full hearing before it renders its decision.
Okay. Everyone get that?
(laughing).
So we're operating as if the uncontested 10% does not apply to this particular application. But we have our other position that while it's contested, we believe we've been at 10% for a longer period. That's where we are procedurally. I'll now turn it over to the applicant to give us an update as to where they are in this application. If you could introduce yourselves, please.
Good evening. My name is Warren Baker. I represent the applicant, and with me is Brian Murphy, the principal of the applicant. I do... I have not done all of the calculations with regard to it, but I don't think I disagree with the fact that it has been about 17 months since we... That has been told during this particular period of time to test the question of whether or not there was a safe harbor. I do note that we happen to agree with the DHCD, and we happen to agree with the HAC and its decision. And glad to see that they made what we believe is certainly the right decision in terms of going forward. We do understand and appreciate the interlocutory nature of it and the fact that it was reserved for further appeal after these proceedings have been done, which is an interesting process in itself. What we did, however, in the meantime, since it's been about seven... One year and almost a half since this project has been certainly reviewed because of the activities with regard to the appeal and those efforts, we were requested, and we wanted to look at the project itself with regard to some of the comments that had been issued and made prior to this delay, and look at the project to see whether or not there was anything that we could do to meet some of those objections, so we could have some balancing that went on with regard to those items, the site issues themselves, and also the need for affordable housing in Hangon. What we did is that we requested a continuance of this hearing to be able to address each one of those issues. One of the problems with that is that every move hits with three or four other impacts on it with regard to issues with regard to economic models and engineering differences and a myriad of the other reactions, which this board, being through these things, certainly knows how that is. We are working hard on it, but felt that if we were to make a presentation tonight, then it would not have been one that was well thought out enough to continue, and we wanted to make sure that whatever presentation had all of the pieces to it. We understand that... We sent a letter in to the board and asking for that continuance, and we were instructed that the board wanted to see us, and here we are.
Yes, right. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we do not have much to say, as indicated in the conversations. What we are doing is that we are generally looking at the alterations in the road layout. That is one thing that we're looking at from a number of things. Because of that, that impacts a number of different issues. We are looking at the movement of unit placement and the number of units. We are looking at the septic placement and its design, and we're also looking and being sensitive to fire apparatus turnouts, which was an issue, a larger issue from the... Those dynamics, and we must say that we have been meeting with the engineer. Matter of fact, Monday, we met with them. Tuesday, we met with them. Tomorrow, we're meeting with them. And we are... Various different kinds of designs and issues. I cannot tell you what any of those things may or may not be, because they all interact. We have also been told that we have on Thursday the necessity of submitting a revised plan and also some other technical matters, such as the peer review fee and those other kinds of things, which we intend to comply. My hope is that that very preliminary plan that we are submitting for further review... By the way, we've had traffic, as you know, we presented. All of the other application issues are there. The plan has been there. All of the other kinds of pieces, I think, sufficient to meet our preliminary plan requirements, have been submitted but have not been peer reviewed. So obviously, we expect the peer review issue to be a large part of the next step. So that's where we are. I do note, however, that it's almost like we didn't get a continuance because we are here and talking about it, so I'm not quite sure how that plays into it. And I also received late today, which I didn't have time to digest, a request for looking at the dates to make sure that we were in compliance because of the extension and how that interplays with the day. So I will look at that and certainly respond in the next day.
You went over four items: alterations to road layout, the units, number of placement, septic, fire equipment. What's your expectation that you be able to present revised plans, knowing that there's that interaction that's going to, you know, it's going to take some time? What would you expect?
Well, I can't quantify it, because to tell you the truth, we honestly don't know. And I want to make sure you know that. Would... Is it possible that we would come back and say, "With everything we've done, we make this move, but we probably have a problem here," et cetera? That it may be we stand on the plans as submitted, okay? The second thing is that there are some issues that I think may be mitigated, if you will, if we try to do this and do that. For example, I think that one thing that makes a lot of sense, and we've done that, but there was a lot of work to do it, is to move the septic system from the border of the property into the internal section of the property. And the idea of that would be to avoid any kind of impact or groundwater issues or things like that with regard to particularly any properties that might be close, or particularly if they have septic systems that may in fact be close. We're looking at that. We're looking at the width of the driveway, okay? We're looking at the placement of certain things. I think the fire issue with regard to turnouts question, we want to see if it's wiser to move places to make sure that there's a compliance with the... Any rules that may be, but also something that certainly makes sense and from a safety point of view. So each one of those pieces, I think, we're looking at, but as soon as we make one, for instance, moving the septic system internally means we're moving the units externally, and then now we're into other questions, such as the buffer and the other kinds of issues. So all of them are interrelated, so I cannot tell you anything more than we are working to meet your deadline of Thursday.
Part of what drives our deadline is the statutory deadline that we have to conclude our hearings and ultimately issue a decision. So that if we hear from you an indefinite time as to presenting revised plans, and knowing that those plans will then have to be peer reviewed, public comment, this board having discussions, unless there's an agreed-upon extension of the statutory deadline, we will not have adequate time to do justice for the town in terms of our review. So we can't... This board cannot accept an indefinite commitment for revised plans when we have a definite deadline for issuing a decision.
Right.
So that is why I was asking, what is the time that you would be looking for, other than...
Oh, I... Maybe I wasn't making myself clear. Thursday. We are submitting revised plans Thursday.
Okay. My understanding was it was going to be preliminary because you didn't have...
They have to be.
I understand. So that recognizing that they're preliminary, is it your intention that we act on those plans as if they are your plans, or knowing that they're going to be subject to a lot further revisions? Because if there are those revisions, and you want us to take those into account, again, we need the appropriate time to take them into account, and we have a fixed deadline. So either the deadline's going to have to be pushed out, or we need to say, "These are the plans." But if the plans keep shifting, this board is not going to be able to do an appropriate job.
I am cognizant of that dilemma, if you will.
So how would you suggest...
I'm looking at the 180 days, and I believe that that 180 days needs to be adhered to, although we can give you more time. During this particular process, all plans in a 40B are preliminary. That is the requirement for submission, and I understand that we work to make them as definite as can be under the rules and the regulations and the fact that this is certainly designed not to have fully vetted plans that would cost something beyond the issue of getting a permit initially. That's its design. So with regard to the fact that are... Can there be changes in responses to concerns of the audience, concerns of the board, concerns of the peer review? Those, I think, are well within that time period that we have. I think that we have been, for instance, on the continuance for this one, for us to try to do a... Get more information to address some of those concerns that you may have, we have already consented to an extension of that 180 days by the time period from the hoped-for continuance, which I don't know exists anymore, but the... To the date. So we added 28 days to that one.
So help me to understand. So the March 25 date, Susan, is that with their additional 28?
No, that's just the statutory deadline. So they... At the time, if I may, there was... At the time that the original dates got circulated, the period of the stay for the appeal had been calculated in, but the 35 days for the tolling had not. So that date was off the incorrect date.
Got it.
So, you know, I guess the question then becomes, you know, is Attorney Baker suggesting push 28 days off of March 25? Or like, I guess I'm just trying to understand what you're saying, because now we're working just with different dates.
There's no doubt that the different dates, as of 5 o'clock this afternoon, were presented to me. So I... Okay. The second piece to it is that with the request for a continuance so that we could present that plan at the next hearing, we had requested that we meet mid-January. The response back was January 11 was a date that was... Worked better for your schedules.
Right.
Okay? Which is about a three-week delay. In that, we had originally talked about... Had no problem in taking the delay from tonight through that date of hopefully mid-January and say we would tack that on to the 180. We were accommodating. We weren't going to have you lose any time from the submission. Additionally, submitting the plans within weeks... Couple of weeks ahead of that hearing and making sure that you had all the money for peer review.
Right.
That we haven't changed. So if in fact we run into issues with regard to the statutory requirement with regard to the 180 days and all of the information that you reasonably are needed and require, which is an interesting standard, then you'll find us responsive. We're trying to make sure that you have enough time to do it, but we do... We've already been a year and a half in this particular project, and so therefore, we would like, obviously, the hearings to be concluded. I was talking with my client tonight, and we are finishing up on 140B project, and from the first hearing to the last unit sold, 15 years. So I am appreciative of the fact that how long these things can continue to take in an efficient process. So you're not going to find us unreasonable, but I'm not going to turn and say, "Yeah, we're going to be giving you an extra 90 or whatever." But if we run into an issue that we're trying to find a solution for, I think you'll find us extraordinarily accommodating.
So right now, as it stands, we have a submission deadline of Thursday, and we have the March 25 deadline. Is that for the last hearing or the decision?
That's to close the hearing.
Close the hearing. Okay. And so what I'm hearing is... Tell me if I get this right, that rather than... You would still get the plan, but we'd have the hearing to the 11th of January to have a chance then. That's when we would open up a real substantive hearing.
Substantive.
Right.
That I agree.
And what would we be proposing for an extension on the March 25? Because if we could get an agreement on that now, I think that makes sense.
Well, if it's that 21 days, right?
Twenty...
Three days.
Twenty-three?
Is it 23 days?
Yeah, I'm looking at the calendar right now. So it's three weeks is January 9th, so that's 21 days. So January 11th is 23 days.
January... I'm sorry. Ninth?
Eleventh.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. No, the ninth would be 21 days, and we were talking about the 11th, so that gets us to the 23.
I mean, we appreciate that offer. On some level, it would almost be more helpful to have an extension that was comparable in time to the amount of time that we've lost since the hearing resumed on October 31st to when we're going to get the revised plans, because we've been in this period where we don't have the resources, because you've not provided peer review funds, nor have you provided the plans, which we would be reviewing. So I mean...
We never were requested either, notwithstanding the rules and regulations, but in all fairness, that was not because of the issues with regard to the 10% question. That was never raised. So I don't want to think that we are not responding and haven't responded when requested in the right way.
Well, you responded to say that you want to submit revised plans and that you don't want us to peer review the old plans. So you asked that you submit peer review funds later.
Most of the new plans, okay, are going to rely upon the old plans, and if they had been reviewed with regard to drainage calcs and other kinds of issues, all of those items are there. We're talking about some surface changes, potentially, maybe not. And so therefore, having that reviewed at this point in time would not have changed, particularly in response to the request that, "Could we look at this plan to see if we could modify it to address some of the issues that you had already raised?"
I...
So unless you say, "Don't do that."
No, that's not how...
I thought what Emily was saying is that we wanted to do the peer review. The money's not come in, so we couldn't do it. So it's not as if...
Well, Joe, it's kind of a combination of both.
Okay.
Because what happened is Emily said, "We need to do peer review. You know, are the plans changing? Are we doing peer review on the current plans?" And I think she's had more than one conversation with Mr. Murphy, but I was present with Attorney Baker at a meeting where it says, "Oh, no, we don't want you to spend the money on the current plans, and then they're changing, and then we have to pay more money to get them reviewed." So they, you know, I was present for one, and I know Emily had other conversations where it was, "No, we don't want to give you the money yet, because we are changing our plans," and then the date for when the plans were going to come kept moving back, moving back, and Emily has that documented. So that's what the... That's why Emily's concerned that now there... It's been 49 days since October 31, and there's been, you know, no plans, and Emily accommodating the request of, "We don't want to spend money until we have revised plans." So this is kind of where the little kind of back and forth has been.
What happened at that meeting, I disagree with that characterization, and I don't want to get into it, but the point was clearly that if at request, they said, "We want you to change this and change this and change that," and I said, "Great, we will try to look at that as we always try to do to try to meet something," but without some guidance from the town, what we're going to do is we're going to go through series and series and series of these kinds of things, as the town says, "I want this, I want less units, I want this." And so we were discussing about what was the most efficient way to accomplish that goal. And I don't think that we should be sitting there saying, "We're the ones who delayed that in any way."
Well, I mean, just in fairness, by not providing the money, you've delayed the ability to do peer review. That's unambiguous.
Okay. So you're saying, "Don't make any changes to the plan, stand on what we've already submitted."
I didn't say that, because you said that we could do peer review even based on the plans that we have now, that there's certain things, drainage calculations, whatever, that I thought you said we could do. What I'm saying is, we have not been able to, because the funds which the regs require you to produce so that we could begin the peer review have not yet been provided.
Right.
And they were not provided at the time the application was filed. And so for you to say that we have not done that process is entirely with you, because you've not provided the funds to commence that. So I really... I think what I'm hearing from counsel and from Emily is that regardless of where the requests originated, the town did not have the ability to do the peer review, because no funds have been provided. Am I incorrect about that, or have funds been...
No, I don't think you did have the funds. From our perspective, we did not... We weren't requested that funds outside of the... Never did we have that or the number we did have recently. And the other issue, of course, is the town took the position that there would be no more hearings, because you had reached that 10% at that point in time. So I think that the mutual aspect of it, "Let's not go spend money," and obviously, it took a year and a half to go to get to where we have to do, I think that we both participated in where we sit today. That was my point. And I'm not trying to move it someplace. I'm trying to get to the point where you have enough time to render your decision, but we were... We, maybe wrongly so, anticipated that we were trying to be accommodating by changing these. We were requesting.
If I knew at that meeting that we'd be sitting here today talking about the fact that it was our fault for not giving the review fee funds, I would have said, "Go with the plan you've submitted, and I'll give you the review fee funds." What was asked was for us to take an earnest look at the plan, which I did in good faith. And now I'm sitting here at a meeting, being told that, you know, that's completely our fault. So if you'd like, I can submit, you know, the exact same plan that we've had all along with the review fees and not, you know, work in good faith. But, you know, I don't think that's what everybody wants.
I don't think it's anyone's intent to assign blame. What we're trying to... What, what we're trying to suggest is that we've all lost some time, because we don't really know the specifics of the plan, and in fact, there is no plan on the record that you've confirmed you'd like to build and that we have the ability to peer review. And so, the board is simply asking for a comparable extension in the time that we've lost to review it on the other end, which, which seems reasonable. It's, we're not pointing fingers, we're simply asking for, instead of the 28 days you previously agreed, the 49 days that we've lost between the interlocutory decision and this evening.
Well, it sounded like you were pointing fingers.
Nope. It wasn't my intent, certainly.
And without giving a shout, it was our fault for, for the time that we've had between now and then, and that was unambiguous.
Right, right, and I think the, the reason I made that comment is I was responding to counsel's comment, that we could have done the review, but we failed to do so, and my response is, "Well, we couldn't, because we didn't have the money."
Right.
So, that's factually accurate, and that's not pointing fingers, that's responding to the comment that we should have been doing it all along, and I'm saying, "We couldn't, because we didn't have the funds."
Right.
And that's the only point I'm making.
Okay. And so, now, we're going to be, we're the only ones giving out time here for, for something that's not necess, well, it's not necessary, I don't think it's necessary. We've been doing some work on, on this, and if I knew that we were going to be in the position of extending time, then I may have made a different decision.
Yes, it sounds like there was not an understanding that the delay in sort of getting the, the right plans, if you will, reviewed, would necessitate an extension on the back end, since the back end is fixed. And that, and that's the point that I think we all need to realize, is that when there is give on, on the board's and the zoning administrator's side of saying, "Yes, it makes sense, let's, let's do a review of the right plans," that that by definition means, "We need the time to do it, and there should be an appropriate extension." That, that I think is all that Emily is referring to.
And I appreciate that. I don't think anyone's proceeding in bad faith. You used the word "right plans." We, since the meeting was referenced, we were asked to come to a meeting, and in that meeting, we requested to see whether or not we could adjust our plan. At that point in time, we had no intention of adjusting our plan. To try to accommodate, we said, "Yes, let's take the hardest look we can at this, this issue."
Right.
And we said, "Yes, we will do that," and then when we started getting into it, we then went ahead and said, "Can we have more time? And I will give an extension on the time from this dated hearing to the hearing date we have." We thought that left everybody in place. Then the request came, "You will pay this and give us the plan by the 21st. We are saying we will do that on Thursday to make sure that the peer review can be done." But if you're saying that the peer review initially would have been useless, I don't think so, but in any event, we, the, the peer review is going to have to look at it. Now, if we've made some design issues, and you're saying that the, the time that for you to notice us for the next hearing, okay, which was from the decision in October of 31st of this year to the decision to have a hearing tonight, we should also pick up that. I didn't render the appeal, I didn't assert the 10%. Matter of fact, you know, we, we argued against it, and I think we ultimately proved to be true. But the, the point being is, is that I don't mind working with you, but I think just saying, "Now we have carte blanche to do that," I think we're not doing justice to the requirement of 180 days and the efficiency of it. So, what I'm hearing from my client is that you prefer us not making any changes to accommodate what you want to do, because we believe the original plan is, is certainly sufficient, and you don't want us to participate in that one. And all the hearings I've done, this idea of some give and take and try to move it is constantly part of that process, and this is the first time we've had it.
Counselor, I haven't heard anyone on this side of the table say, "Don't make changes to your plans." I haven't heard those words once this evening, so I take issue with that characterization. We're asking, I think, for some reasonable modifications to the plans that we submitted, that we have. I have it right here, in tab two of the, of the original site development plans, based on comments that we received from numerous municipal officials, including fire and police chief about very valid, in my mind, public safety measures. I don't think anyone's saying, "Don't make changes." Can we make changes? Can we adjust the driveway lengths, the layout of the buildings, reduce the number of units to a reasonable number? That's what we're asking.
Mr. Chairman, and I know it's not beneficial for myself and Attorney Baker to go back and forth on what happened at the meeting, so I don't want to prolong that, I'll just state for the record, I think Emily will concur, both at the meeting, that's not why Emily called Mr. Murphy to set up the meeting, to try to talk them into changes, it was to try to figure out where they were, figure out where it was, and then said, you know, raised the question of, "Are you willing to make modifications? What might those be?" Ideas were bounced around, but at that meeting, a commitment was made by Mr. Murphy that the plans and funds would be in the office on November 22nd. Emily followed up with an email. So, you know, I don't know if you want to call, pointing fingers, blame, not blame, I, I don't think labeling makes any difference. We know what was committed to, we have email confirmation of this, so, you know, I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, we were told on the 21st that they had revised plans that were going to be filed on the 22nd after having a whole discussion...
22nd of November.
Uh, November, after having a whole discussion about, "Well, what about this? What about that? What about that?" And they did say they'd think about it, but they still committed that it, what they had as of that date was coming in the next date. And Emily followed up again, November 27th, it's now December 19th. So, you know, it's, it's up to the board, obviously, and the applicant to work out what the continuances are, but, you know, I, I think we have, we have it documented as to what the communications have been.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I think what we need to do is agree on dates. I, there's no one here who's saying, "Let's, don't make changes to the plans." And, but we need to begin a process so that we have appropriate time to review the plans and make an informed decision. So, what are, what dates work for the board and for staff so that we can reach a conclusion in a reasonable time, and let's see if the applicant is, is amenable?
So, what I would propose, based on the time that's elapsed since the hearing resumed on October 31st, that we've not had the ability to review plans, is that there would be an additional 49-day extension on the statutory deadline to close the hearing.
So, what does that bring you to?
That brings us to May 13th, which is a Sunday, so we propose May 14th.
And that would be the date for the last...
Hearing.
The last hearing. And is that adequate to have peer review and to do whatever, whatever needs to be done? Because I, I don't want to give them a date and they say, "Oh, we need more." I mean, I want to be clear, what...
It really depends on the quality of the plans and the completeness of the plans that we receive, but our peer review engineers have committed to having the, the plans that we receive reviewed in advance of the January 11th, potential January 11th, continued hearing date, as long as those plans are received by Thursday.
And have we gone over with the applicant, who the peer reviewers are? Are there any disputes about that? I don't want to...
Yes, no.
I asked two questions.
Yes.
Yes, they've gone over who, who the reviewers are, and no, there's no disputes. Okay, thank you. So, okay, I got it. So, what I heard from Emily is, is we, she thinks, and I, and I understand the reasoning, that a May 13th date for a final hearing makes sense. What, is that acceptable, or do you want, tell, tell me what, what's going to work? Because I, I want to get a framework and just move forward.
My, my, my first reaction, and I do have to sort of talk to my clients, look at the numbers, et cetera, I think 49 is a little aggressive with regard to what had happened from the decision that was rendered by the HAC and those number of days.
Okay, so...
The delay, the delay in saying from, from this night to the 11th, I'm happy to give that extension, okay? But I don't think that anything more than that extension is warranted. So, I'm happy to give the 20, if it's 24, 23 days, do that. If, if the board says, "We are reviewing this, and we find issues, and we're trying to find common ground on cetera," you'll find us very accommodating.
March 25th is a Sunday.
But a carte blanche, 49 or 50 days out of 180, just because the appeal that was unsuccessful, you know, and the time that you, you decided on it, okay? I had discussions with counsel about that meeting, and I was invited to that meeting, so I know exactly what that meeting's purpose was. So, I, I, I just think that, that doing the 23 days, working on what we can do, staying within the statutory framework, makes sense.
So, what is that date? So, we're clear. That's...
Do you have the date if we added 23, or whatever the numbers?
Two, two...
To the March 25th.
Well, the March 25th is actually a Sunday.
So...
So...
So, be the following month.
So, the, so adding 23 days to the 26th, so what does that bring you to?
One, two, three, April, well, April 19th if you go off the 26th.
No, 18th, it's the 17th.
April 18th, yeah.
So, what day is it?
23 days.
This is simple math, we should be...
Well, I'm looking at the calendar. The 26th is a Monday.
I'm looking at the 18th. April 18th.
The next Monday is the 2nd, the 2nd Monday is the 9th, the 3rd month, day is the, 21 days is, is April 16th.
I'm sure someone out there can Google this.
Two more days, it's the 18th.
Yeah, April 18th.
April 18th. Is that what you said?
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, I can't do math, I shouldn't try.
So, is your calculation the 16th or the 17th?
No, the 18th.
The 18th.
April 18th, Wednesday, April 18th.
Wednesday, April 18th.
So, that would be the, so that is the maximum the applicant's willing to extend this to?
Then 40 days for the decision.
Right, we, we, all we're talking about here was just the, the hearing date.
Okay.
I'd just like to state, I had no conversation with Mr. Baker prior to meeting with him on November 21st, so I don't know what he's talking about, about conversations.
We're just not going to, yeah.
You didn't, the other, the board's counsel did.
I don't know anything about that.
I do.
This board's counsel?
Your appeal counsel.
About the substance...
I'm talking about Carrie Ryan, I believe.
Okay, okay.
I don't know anything about that.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we're getting plans and money on Thursday, and we're going to begin the review process then. And they are sticking to the 18th of, of April.
Right.
Which is a little less than a month's time of what you were looking for. Okay.
And we continue this until Thursday, January 11th?
Okay. I do want to, I know there are members of the public here, and I would give people a chance to speak, and I know you've been looking for input, so that whatever plans you give us reflect the most current comments.
I, I, I appreciate that, and I don't want to deny in your discretion to hear anyone that you certainly want, but since the only request is for a continuance at this point in time, and there's been no substance at all since the last hearings, and we heard everyone, I, I don't know where, where that would help, outside of a repetition of what we've had before. And, and I, I listen to every single word that's being stated.
Right. The, I would not be looking for a repetition of what was said last time, but to the extent that there are comments that go to the issues, that, that are, go to the substance of the plans, and I think you've made it clear that you want to make sure that you've, you're aware of, of what the town's concerns are, before you present us with the plans, this is an appropriate time to make that happen. I'm not going to do it for an extended period, but we have members of the public here, and I think we need to make sure that they have a chance to speak. Susan, what is your thought about Thursday? Do you see a reason for that?
Well, I mean, it could be worthwhile to answer your question, to need to just review this middle, make sure that it's as complete as possible.
Right, right.
Potentially, just, just very briefly. I also just wanted to note that I prepared some correspondence for the applicant...
Yeah.
...that details the, the application procedural history, and also some of the, the local concerns or deficiencies in the application that we'd like to see addressed. So, we'll provide that to the applicant tonight and make it part of the record.
Okay. So, with that, if there are members of the public, and we've, it's been a year, there's been a Super Bowl between our hearings last and now.
I have two new knees since we last met.
But it's important that we make sure members of the public have an opportunity to comment, so if there are members of the public who would like to address the board, and remember, please, you're addressing the board, you're not addressing the applicant, with comments or concerns about this project that are not repetitive of comments that you may have made or heard at the prior hearing, if you can remember them, now is the time, and there will clearly be other opportunities, other hearings, when we have their plans that are coming on Thursday before us, but if there are comments that people would like to make now, you're welcome to speak. Please, when you come to the mic, make sure you give us your name and address. Yes, sir?
Steve Vicki, 5 Autumn Circle. I'm in the interim, between the last time we all met. A six-acre tract of land is coming to play, it's the Jovault Witness property. My question to the board is, if that was purchased fairly soon, what, if any implications, does that have on the permit, or the application, excuse me?
That is an interesting legal question that I don't think we are going to resolve at this hearing.
Okay.
But we are aware of the issue.
Okay. Are you currently looking at that?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Yes, in the back.
Lisa Taylor, 16, Autumn Circle. Mr. Baker mentioned drainage calcs, and I submitted, we've had some flooding that's related to how low we are, and have submitted photos documenting a recent issue with the pipe that the property in question is trying to use as drainage, and I'm just wondering, how far out are the drainage calculations? Like, I know within the property is obviously going to be something looked at, but for the abutters and the properties that are really low around it, I think it's really important that this gets a thorough investigation.
I, I agree.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, and then you.
Graham Madison, 12, Autumn Circle. Just a clarification on timing. So, on Thursday, the plans will be submitted, and that we'll be able to look at, and they'll be available to the public?
Correct.
And you were mentioning there, you're going to get, have a get-together, where you're going to go through them for the completeness? Is that open to the public?
That's something, I'm going to discuss schedule af, after we've gotten the public comments, but any, any hearing that this board has is open to the public.
And any discussion in terms of where, but just from hearing the conversation, where saying, "Oh, we would like you to make this adjustment, that adjustment," which seemed, would imply that the, it was a back and forth between the zoning board and the applicant. Are those open to the public?
So, there was comments by staff, not the zoning board, and it's very common for not only the staff of the zoning board, but for other boards to participate in meetings with applicants, just to make sure that things are being handled properly. I don't know whether those, I don't think those are generally open to the public.
No, no board members participated, the only, well, I don't know if there's been staff meetings with the applicant. The one meeting referred to was a meeting that myself and Emily had with Attorney Baker and Mr. Murphy, just to kind of gear back up after the long hiatus, and there was just bouncing back and forth of, you know, ideas as to suggestions that might make the project, but it was not, the board was not involved, and it's completely at their discretion whether or not they make it, so that's not a public conversation.
Okay, got it, thank you. And then just in terms of the timing, so this Thursday, you know, we've had all this time between the fire chief and, and the police chief making comments, and the, the number of days was mentioned many times, but, so it will be this Thursday that we will be able to see these things, so it's, that's sufficient time? Because it seems, I guess I'm curious as to why it's taken so long until the plans have been, why we haven't seen them already? As a member of the public, why we've had this long delay, but yet, we're still not privy to these until, as we're coming up against the deadline?
So, when you say "we," we have not been privy to them either, so, which is the reason we talked about, have an extension. So, we are going to work within the statutory time constraints, the plans that are submitted to the board will be made public, and it's my expectation that the plans we receive on Thursday, this Thursday, will in fact, address the issues that have been long... in fact, address the issues that have been long on the record.
Got it. And we've heard that the attorneys, they will be working with us all along the way, so I feel confident about that.
And to answer your question about why it's taken so long? I mean, obviously, the appeal, the town's appeal--
No, I understand that. I was just making--
It doesn't make any sense to do any work while--
They had time to address that with their engineers. Excuse me, that was my question.
Great. Thank you. And he covered it. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, Brad Taylor, 16 Autumn Circle. In terms of the plans for this Thursday, is that going to include things like septic and other matters or is it just going to be a new schematic drawn?
We don't have the plans. I can't answer that. Will it include septic?
If you'd like a response, we have submitted plans. We submitted them a year and a half. What we're talking about is some minor adjustments to those plans, but it's not going to change the general engineering or other things. We're looking at those issues. The determination may in fact be, as I indicated earlier, that we stand on the plans as already submitted. So, the only thing we're trying to do is to see whether or not we can address some of the open concerns that we also believe are appropriate to address. We disagree with many things about what the town may say, I think this is a public safety issue, which we think does not imperil public safety when it comes to an issue in a 40B. So there are issues that we have to work with, but the plan may in fact be the same. That's what we're trying to determine. But we are working hard to see whether or not some things can change that address some of the open comments.
Was there an actual septic plan submitted or was it just the plans that are in the eye?
The location of the septic facility was located on the plan, yes.
I wasn't asking about where it's located, I'm asking about the actual system.
I think that the application indicated that would comply with all applicable rules and regulations for its sizing, et cetera. Which is what we need to do and what we did.
Thank you.
That Yusa, 48 Ward Street. May I address Attorney Baker and one of his comments?
No, please, no. Please address it to me.
All right. So I guess my question is, there was a comment regarding whether or not there is really an issue with public safety, fire safety and police issues. And what I thought I heard was that the attorney disagrees with the police and fire assessments.
So what's your question?
The question is, does he disagree?
Well, I think he, counsel will assert the applicant's position and this board will make a determination about whether or not there are safety issues. So he's certainly free to advocate for his client.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Steve Collins at 9 Autumn Circle. Just one comment, which I know there's, with staff and Attorney Baker, there've been discussions about, you know, suggestions and this and that. I just want to make sort of the point that from our perspective as well, we have issue in general with the entire development. So I just want to just get that assurance from the board that you're not, you're considering all things, including this not going through. I just want to kind of have that as an assurance, that this isn't a foregone conclusion, friendly 40B, that whole concept. I just want to make sure that that's on the table as well.
So if you're asking, are all considerations on the table? The answer is yes.
Can I just make a clarification as well? As I said, to the extent that staff and other town hall staff and, you know, myself in that one meeting may have thrown around ideas, that was not, that, like I said, that's completely at their discretion. None of that was communicated to the board. So, Mr. Fisher and Mr. Freeman didn't get a memo saying, oh, by the way, we suggested this, they said that. None of that was. That was, it's a typical process, all developments, 40B or otherwise, where staff will meet with the applicants and try to talk through kind of constraints or different issues with projects. But it's not appropriate to this process that you're all here for that that's, you know, that that is happening. So I just want to assure everybody that that does not happen and that did not happen in that case.
Okay. Yeah. I think just thinking of it as agents of the board, you know, and staff capacity, et cetera, there's--
Yep. Okay.
I'm reminded of a famous saying by Sergeant Schultz. I know nothing. Okay? I know nothing.
This is not Hogan's Heroes. So, okay. So with that, I think we should just talk about schedule. We've got a commitment from the applicant to get us, to get filed with the town on Thursday. And you're aware that town offices close, I think, at 4:30. So that's, just as a time constraint, don't leave it tacked to the window. Make sure it gets filed with the right person.
And actually, on that note, in terms of the correct person, you should provide a copy to the town clerk and then bring copies for the zoning board to the building department because our office will be closed on Thursday. I will be in at some point, but you may not hit me. And then also, please email the plans.
And the check would be delivered to--
You can bring it to the building department, please.
Building department. So then, what I would suggest is that this board, excuse me, we're still talking here. This board reconvene Thursday evening to review what's been submitted. Applicant does not, you're obviously invited to every meeting, but the purpose is, we're just going to review, make sure we got what we expected to get. And then we should set a hearing date for, we said it was going to be January 11th. At, are we scheduling it for 7:00 PM?
So technically, Thursday night is a hearing date.
Right. Yes, but I didn't, I don't want the applicant to think that we expect substantive experts or anything. We're just going to receive the papers that have been presented. And the 11th works for you at 7:00 PM? That's, make sure everyone's calendar is good. Okay. Yes, sir. Please come up to the mic.
I want to use that 48 Ward Street. I just want to make sure of the comment I just heard, which made me uncomfortable. I heard the comment that public safety is not part of 40B.
No, no. You did not hear that comment from anyone at this table. So I'm not sure where you heard that from.
Okay. Just making sure because health, safety and welfare is a primary care for the entire state, for the entire nation, not only for 40B, for everything else.
Yeah, so you didn't--
I heard the comment. I don't know if anybody else heard it, but--
If you heard it, I will make sure that that is not--
Making sure that public safety, health and welfare of the public is an important issue.
It is. And that is, that is the charge of this board. We'll make sure that we promote it. Thank you. Okay, so we've got documents and checks scheduled for this coming Thursday, which is the 21st. So then, I'm going to continue this hearing, I'll take a motion to continue the hearing to the 21st at--
What time works for you, Joe?
7:00.
At 7:00--
Oh, for a four, I'm not certain about Thursday for me, but I may have the mountains in--
Yeah. At 7:00? Okay, so that'll be at, okay, so that's going to be at 7:00.
7:00 PM Thursday.
And then, we're going to have the hearing after that on January 11th, also at 7:00 PM.
So I will make that motion. So moved.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are continued.
Thank you.
Thank you.